Evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 23 board meeting of the Mount Vernon City School District. Mr. McCormick, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Trustee Red.
President.
Trustee Turnquist. Trustee Crump. Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Patterson. Short.
Oh, present, I'm sorry.
Trustee McOwen. Trustee White. Trustee Saunders.
Present.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Do we have any communications from the public?
There are no communications this evening.
Okay. Well, first, I wanted to say happy spring to everyone, and we made a decision before we started the meeting tonight, the formal meeting tonight, that we will have our next meeting in person. That's on April 6. We will continue to just have it be the board and needed staff only. We can't, we're not going to allow the public in just yet because of COVID, but we will have our next meeting as in at the Board of Education because everyone's coming back and we can come back too. So that's that. So Dr. Hamilton, do you have a report this evening?
I do. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board and members of the public. I do have a report this evening. First, I'd like to just share that this past Saturday, well, Saturday before last night, on March 13, the Mount Vernon Boys varsity basketball team defeated New Rochelle for the Section 1 South Tier Championship with a score of 62 to 45. This was the culminating event of a pandemic-shortened basketball season. Under normal circumstances, we would then advance to regionals and possibly even participate in the state tournament. However, these events have been canceled for this year. The abbreviated tournament has been particularly enjoyable as the team had three wins in a row, two of which were average losses from the reg, revenge losses, I'm sorry, for the regular season. The team took pride in defeating their rival, which we all know is New Rochelle High School in the New Rochelle home gym, by the way.
Yeah.
T-shirts and a plaque were presented to the team after the game. The team this year consists of five seniors, seven juniors, three sophomores, and the team really, really worked hard the entire season. And I have to salute Coach Sanino for, even in the pandemic, producing a challenging team with a shortened season, compromised practices, and all kinds of hurdles, but nonetheless was still able to be victorious. So congratulations to our boys, our coaches, and to Dr. Gonzalez for continuing to have such a stellar athletic event and team in our midst. Yes.
Oh, nice. It was great to watch, even even on the computer screen. It was pretty exciting.
Exceptional. And we have, I have two short presentations that I'm going to share with you this evening. First is Dr. Waterman, the principal at Edward Williams Elementary School. So Dr. Waterman is doing a managing-for results process. So in our well, actually, it was her pre-observation meeting, and she presented her process for managing-for results, and I thought she did such a stellar job that it was a great example to share with the board how the work that we've been talking about. I know you've been hearing about MFR and managing-for results, and you've obviously seen the results. And Dr. Waterman has done a particularly impressive job with implementing MFR, as all of our principals have. But I think this is an exemplar in our district, and I've asked Dr. Waterman to share with you and our members of the public, as even students talk about MFR or managing-for results, or you hear teachers share managing-for results, you would have some context and understand what it is for and what is designed to do. So, Dr. Waterman, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hamilton. And good evening to everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, President Miller and Vice President Saunders, Dr. Hamilton, or members of the school board and members of the cabinet. I'd also like to acknowledge members of the school community, parents, community members, and guests. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share with you this evening. Mr. McCormick, would I be able to share my screen? Thank you so much. So I'm going to talk for a few minutes about the managing-for results process that we use here at Edward Williams. This evening, we'll take a quick glance back at where we started when I began my time here as principal. Talk a little about our data needs, the math assessment platform we use, our balanced approach to literacy and progress monitoring, and the results as as they have come due to our work. And I'll close out with a QR code for access to bitmoji classes that I'll talk about when we get to that point. So since our scholars have had to adapt to this virtual world, we certainly had as well. So in this bitmoji classroom, along with me is my literacy coach, Melissa Cabrera. And here we have our math coach and our assistant principal, Mr. Casey. I'm going to come back to these bitmoji classrooms toward the end. So let's take a look back at where our journey began at Edward Williams. When I started here in 2016, this is what we were faced with. Our ELA results were at 6% proficiency, and our math results were at 2%. In addition, the infrastructure of the building certainly needed some attention. With that, we started with our literacy, with our data, and compared how our scholars were performing as compared to all students in New York State. And as you can see, students in New York State were scoring over 30% in ELA and math, while our students at Edward Williams were scoring under 10% in ELA and under 5% in math. So we had to get to work. And so with our math process, one of the things that we use is EdgeElastic, which is an education management platform. And with EdgeElastic, using that platform, our teachers have access to data reports. These are just snapshots of what the teachers have access to. You'll see these bar graphs here will help the teachers understand which questions the students got right in green or wrong in red, or if the child just skipped the question altogether. This line graph here gives us a sample of how much time the children took to answer the question. And so as we dig into that work with our managing-for results, the teachers then take some time to really drill down and analyze the data using a template such as this. In this template, the teachers analyze the standards that are being taught. This is just a sample of third grade. They put the children into quadrants based on their performance for the for the interim assessment. From there, they analyze the questions, as I showed you previously, and that work is done for every class on the grade level. From there, the teachers take time to analyze the questions. So here, the children received 50% or less on these questions right here. So this is where the heart of our data work begins when we're talking about our MFR process. When they analyze the questions, they're trying to find any misunderstandings that the children had based on their responses. We also take a look at the prerequisite knowledge that the children would have needed in order to have been successful when they were answering those particular questions.
So one second, let me jump in, Dr. Waterman.
Yes.
So this is why this process is so important, because when it is implemented with fidelity, it helps the principal to analyze specifically not just where they want kids to be and how they want them to perform, but it also gives them an opportunity to look at what were the key strategies or indicators of success that students missed that would have effectively have helped them spiral into a successful pathway by mastery of the next level or the next set of skills. So for those who are listening, MFR is an internal, or managing-for results, is an internal process I created to establish benchmarks and targets, and principals ensure that there are strategies, and that's exactly what Dr. Waterman is showing here, strategies in place to move the needle. It's effectively your GPS to success. Without knowing where you're going, you can't possibly land or arrive at your destination. So having a target or a destination, and then mapping how you plan to get there. So.
Yes. I have a quick question. So when does this, so you've established what the, you know, what the benchmarks are, you've sorted the students into quadrants.
Yes.
You've figured out the key points that they that they that those who missed, missed. When does this intervention take place? Like, how far after the assessment, how long after the assessment takes place does this happen?
That is a perfect segue, Trustee Miller.
Yay.
President for that question. So that's exactly where I'm going now. So after they analyze the data, the instructional plan is developed and implemented immediately. So within the next couple of days. So the teachers divide the children in their planning process into groups, and they decide what the structure of the period is going to look like, the delivery of the lesson, the resources, and they stay focused on the fact that they want to decrease deficiencies in particular areas. And as Dr. Hamilton mentioned, we want to make sure that we're spiraling the practice of 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 work that they should have already mastered, and sometimes they didn't. And so right after they analyze this data, within a couple of days, we begin a five-week cycle for the children for the intervention. After the five-week cycle, and the teachers maintain attendance, because if the children don't show any progress, we want to possibly say maybe it had something to do with their lack of attending class. The teachers then analyze, there's an interim assessment given, and then the teachers analyze the effectiveness of the intervention that they began over the course of that five-week period. And so here, you can see that for this particular standard, there were two standards for this round that they were focusing on. One standard was met, and one standard was not met. And so if you take a breakdown, this is for the team, and then here's a breakdown by class. And then the teachers take a look at how each child performed, as you can see here, with one standard. Several students did much better than the other standard. And so this child, for example, moved from 25% proficiency in that standard and after the intervention to 80% proficiency. Likewise, this child didn't understand the concept at all and moved to 100% proficiency. And so this work is conducted with every class. Going back to our presentation, there's a calendar that our teachers use in order to map out when they're going to do this work. And so after the assessments are giving, given, for example, here's the test analysis. Then the next day, they're getting ready to implement the work that they analyzed the previous day for the five-week cycle. And so what have our results been? If you take a look here, in 2016, the 2015-16 school year, our third-grade scholars were able to demonstrate math proficiency at 3% as well as our sixth graders at 3%. After several years of intervention, our third graders are now performing at 26%. And the arrow here is pointing out the fact that these third-grade students, we track them from third grade to sixth grade. And with the interventions, these third graders, who in 2016 were at 3%, were at 27% in 2019. So it's a testament to the importance of the small group instruction analyzing the data for our MFR process. So that's our math. We're going to take a glance at literacy. And so our literacy instruction, the research tells us that our struggling readers need what good readers receive, and that's lots of high-success reading experiences. And so going back to our results at, again, when a few years back, prior to this, we put together the decision, we made the decision to go the approach of using balanced literacy. And so balanced literacy is an approach to literacy instruction that encapsulates comprehension, vocabulary fluency, phonics phonemic awareness, and writing. So again, our research tells us that students who read for at least 20 minutes a day will be exposed not only to 1.8 million more words in a year, but they also score 90% better than their peers on high-stakes reading exams. And so the work began, because the practice had been that our scholars were not doing the reading, but that the instruction previous to this approach was very teacher-directed. The teachers were doing all of the reading and analyzing, and so we shifted that work to the children doing the work. So there are multiple components of balanced literacy, and of course, I wouldn't have time to get into all of it today. However, independent reading and guided reading have been two of the most impactful approaches that we've been using. And so with that, in this picture, of course, prior to COVID, part of our formative assessment, our MFR process, teachers sit one-on-one with every child in their class. This teacher in the picture has a copy of the text that the child is reading, and she's analyzing the errors that the child is making so she can design an instructional program for that particular child. And we house that data in a spreadsheet, similar to the type of template that we use for mathematics. In Class 1 here, you'll see at the beginning of the year, the amount of children who were scoring at a Level 1, which they, which we would have wanted them at a Level 3 going into, this is a second-grade class. And compared after the intervention, here's the progress the children began to make. Our children who were Level 1s moved out of 1s into 2s, some of our 2s into 3s. And this particular child, although stayed at 3, his level moved within that Level 3 proficiency area. And so that is a big portion of the work that we're doing with our MFR process when it comes to literacy. Guided reading instruction here, and you do have a copy of this presentation, is the small-group instructional component of literacy for our children. And so our youngest scholars here, this is a kindergarten class in the picture, these children began the year not identifying letters, and they're now reading books that are at lower level, heavily dependent on the photos. And later on, I'll show you how you can take a look at the video itself. And of course, the work has not stopped due to COVID. And so our teachers are also providing literacy instruction, guided reading instruction virtually as well. And there's a video there for you to witness later on as well. System 44 and Read 180 are intervention programs specifically designed for our scholars who are in fourth grade and up, but are reading at least two full years lower than they should. And I'll show you the results of this work later on in the presentation. And so what have our results been? As a result of our MFR process in literacy, our third-grade scholars, who in 2016 were demonstrating proficiency at 7%, third graders in 2019 were demonstrating proficiency at 17%, 10% for sixth grade, and 33%. Again, this arrow pointing out that this cohort of children that were at 7% in 2016, through the implementation of our balanced approach to literacy, were now performing at 33%. And so our overall success, not only has the infrastructure of our school changed on the outside, but what's happening on the inside has transformed as well. And so we moved out of the double-digit school from 2016 to 2019, from 6% to 8% proficiency, and from 2% in ELA, and from 2% to 17% in math. And here's our Read 180 data. This data reflects that over a three-month period, our scholars grew in their reading proficiency from six months to one full year. And that is despite the fact that their instruction has been interrupted due to COVID. So the children are still showing significant progress. And so with that, as you know, we were on the verge of becoming a receivership school several years ago, but are now considered a school in good standing according to New York State. And this little QR code right here, before I show you the bitmoji classrooms, if you hold your phone up to it, will take you to the interactive portion, we call our asynchronous work for our scholars. And so here, everything here is clickable. If you click on Mr. Casey, he's going to take you somewhere. If you click on Mr. Johnson, his presentation for our parents a few weeks back, back in January, will show up for you. And so I want to close tonight with just, I know we are unable to physically come into the building at this point. However, excuse me, the work goes on. And so as you click anything in the bitmoji classroom, it'll take you somewhere. And I'd like to close tonight just with a quick little glimpse as to what has been happening in our building despite the pandemic, despite the challenges. Our scholars continue to be on their way to greater heights of academic achievement. So we'll close with this for our Read Across America Day. Mr. Casey and I dressing up for the children. And with that, my presentation is concluded, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hamilton.
Very, very well done. You did a
Thank you.
job. For those who may not be familiar, or of course, our trustees are familiar with the process, but you've given them a very intimate look at how it works and its implementation.
So so we're, a quick question, or just something to confirm. So are we, since you basically, you've rolled this out, Dr. Hamilton, in almost all our schools, right?
Yes, correct.
So so we basically now are capturing this longitudinal data that which Dr. Waterman showed us. We're capturing that for all our students now?
Yes, exactly. We're capturing this this data that helps us, one, plan for success, and, two, monitor where, if we see any regressions. Now, even though we have a very transient population, it still helps us establish trends in terms of the investment that the board and the district has made in terms of programs and services, textbooks, curriculum, et cetera. So it gives us that longitudinal look to help us determine the efficacy of the investment effectively. And so if we see that things are not working, then we have to go back and say, well, was this a wise investment? I've been very careful, as you know, about piloting things and not doing broad strokes. There is a huge, there's a huge climate in education to jump on the bandwagon for every new thing that comes along. So you have to, in my estimation, you have to be very careful and very thoughtful and deliberate about how you make decisions about things that we invest in. So it's been very deliberate, and this kind of data helps us to assess where we are, short-term and long-term, relative to an investment in programs and curriculum and services.
Right. And this is basically what we've been saying is that when we've discussed our results is that it's, it's, we're steadily building. We're not going to have meteoric, meteoric, and you could, you could keep trying different things every day, but we've given, I think the great thing is that we've, with the consistency of the administration, the professional development with the teachers, we've been able to demonstrate over time that we have tools that are working, and that's, so that's, that's really great. Do any of the trustees have any comments about Dr. Waterman's presentation or questions?
It was an excellent presentation. Thank you, Dr. Waterman. That was a great job.
Yeah, I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed it. It was great to see how we started from one place and how much the hard work of you and the staff and the teachers and administration there are putting in. I love the bitmojis. Mr. Casey's Jordan's really made me chuckle. They were very real. I appreciate it. I loved it. Excellent, excellent work.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I just would really like to thank, if I may, for a second, Dr. Hamilton. Thank not only the district leadership, but all of you for allowing us the flexibility to do what we know is right for children. And Dr. BC for ensuring we have the funding for the programs that we need in order to make sure we can move this work forward. And Dr. Hamilton for his support. Everyone, thank you so much. We're, we're hard at work.
It's great to see results. It's really nice. It's very encouraging.
Good job. Good job, Dr. Waterman. Thank you for doing this tonight. I know you were nervous, Rick, but you did an excellent job.
Yeah, we didn't know you were nervous.
Not at all. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Exhale.
Be well.
Enjoy the change of weather. Night, everyone.
Good night.
Welcome, welcome, Trustee White. And now that you're here, we have a quorum. Trustee Patterson is going to go lie down, because she's not feeling well. Okay, thank you, Trustee Patterson. We appreciate your taking one for the team. Okay.
Okay. Also, this evening, we have a special treat under the guidance of Brother Mohammed. We would like to update the board on some of our student efforts to lead the way on the topic of social justice. If you remember back when the turmoil, the racial turmoil began in the, in the country, I had some significant challenges with some of my colleagues, being the only male superintendent of African-American male superintendent in our area and in our, our group, even in the county. I tasked some of my colleagues with having a discussion about what was happening. I did not, there was no conversation amongst the superintendents about how we were going to educate our children and prepare our teachers to help children unwrap what they were seeing on television and what our country was experiencing. So my colleague in Bronxville took me up on that challenge, and I asked Brother Mohammed to help facilitate bringing some students together for this very important conversation, and it expanded. And so it is really delightful to see our students have such a big role and a voice in this topic. Brother Mohammed and our student representative, Mamé, our board representative, will tell the story of how Mount Vernon students are fighting for social justice, ranging from an update on the Justice Fellowship Project to this year's National Student for Equitable Education Summit, which will be held later on in the spring. So it is my pleasure to turn the mic over to our dear student Mamé and Brother Mohammed.
I'll begin. Thank you, Dr. Hamilton, Madam President, the board members, as well as the cabinet members and all of the community that's watching. It's very much an honor to work for the Mount Vernon City School District in this capacity, and certainly working under the great Dr. Bennett Conroy. I want to share with you our efforts on social justice, which really began with us in the spring of 2020. I want to bring your attention to a great conversation that began when there were a group of students at Graham School that were wrestling with what they had been seeing on television with the murders of unarmed blacks, mostly by police officers. They were frustrated. by police officers. They were frustrated. They, they saw their young around the country speaking out and they wanted a safe space to have a conversation. And so what we did with Dr. McGregor, we took a group of, of teachers of all ethnicities and students, and we had something called the Uncomfortable Conversation, where there was no social topic that was off the table. We talked about white privilege. We talked about entitlement. We talked about racism. And what we found is that we could learn much from each other. It was a very fruitful conversation. And as Dr. Hamilton alluded to, we formed a partnership with Sarah Lawrence College, some of the local school districts, Yonkers and Bronxville, where we have high school students that are randomly grouping together and doing service projects. I'd just like to highlight a couple of our students. We have from the STEAM School, Martina Jean-Claude, who's doing his project on the school pipeline. So again, you have white students from Bronxville, Latino students from from Yonkers, all in one group sharing. Now, this is as a result of COVID because of, obviously we can't meet in person, but we've been meeting weekly in the evenings and they're coming together. And in April, they will have their presentations and certainly I will form the board. We have our student, another student out of state, Malu Bryce, and her team is doing a wonderful project on inequities and special education. And representing Denzel Washington, John Aiden Harvey, he's doing his project with his group on disparities and funding of schools located in minority communities compared to wealthy communities. And the students, again, of different socioeconomic backgrounds are learning so much about the communities. We're so close geographically, but we're so far when it comes to equity and is a great appreciation. And then again, as Dr. Hamilton mentioned, we have something called the C Summit, which is very, very, very exciting. It's a national social justice summit envisioned and led by students from districts across the country. And so we have schools that are participating from Illinois, Wisconsin, Ohio, South Carolina, California, and of course, representing that great state of New York, Mount Vernon City School District. And again, students are teamed together. This could not happen in a very, in a, in a normal setting with maybe if there was a two day conference, they're actually doing work every week, hammering it out. They, they talk offline. They, they, they talk during our breakout sessions on our Zooms weekly. And so what the C All Summit is about, again, it's a student-led movement and it's for equitable education that values and honors and affirms identity of every student. See, the premise is that students have the answers. This summit of young people are saying, I'm looking at school from my lens. Will you see what I see? Will you feel what I feel? And we want you to listen. So it's going to culminate with a presentation or summit that I'll give you some information about. However, one of our students that are participating is our own student trustee, the great Mame Forson. So I'm going to turn over the platform to Mame and she's going to tell you a little bit about what her group is doing and about the experience that she's been having while in this C Summit. My maid of platform is yours.
Thank you. All right. So we're a relatively small group. There's people from New York and the people from Ohio, and our topic is about Black Lives Matter. So we're going to be talking to, to teachers from across the country about content about Black Lives Matter. So learning about housing, food distribution, education, the prison system, just content in general, just in case they don't know much about it. And then we're going to talk just face to face with them about things that they need to do to help the black students in their classroom feel more comfortable. So whether it's being more open about classroom discussions or changing the curriculum to include more black literature that the students don't feel traumatized or just don't feel comfortable listening to, or just being able to change the way they teach because of the way the students feel. Because sometimes white teachers, especially that are teaching black students, don't have the same perspective. They don't have the same lens because they haven't lived the way that we've lived. So this is our chance to tell them from our perspective, this is how we see the classroom and you might need to change the way you teach because of that. So we're going to allow them to have anonymous questions that they ask us about certain topics and we'll just answer back as straightforward as possible, just so they know. We're trying to, you know, change the way the students see education because sometimes it can be really uncomfortable, especially for black students. So we're just trying to make the education system a little bit more interesting for us. If that makes sense, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's phenomenal. We have other students from, who else is on the line with you, your, your colleagues, Mame?
I'm the student that are in my group?
No, in, in the other groups from our district.
Na'ajah. I think there's one name, but I don't remember.
Yes, yes. We, we have two other students in the group. And so this will culminate. The Students for Equitable Education Summit will be on April 24th. And to register, there's an Eventbrite that you can click on to and be a part of it. I'll make sure that we send it out to all of the trustees so that we can see our students lift up their voice and we could learn something because many times many programs are put into place from the perspective of, of, of an administrator or some educators that think something will work and they don't necessarily consult students. And at, at the end of the day, the students have to sit and have to learn and have to be able to produce. And so we want to make a better equitable space so that we can get better results. This ends my, my report and I thank you for this opportunity to be here. Thank you much.
Thank you, Brother Mohammed and Mame. Thank you both for this, this summary. I have to tell you that on the sessions that I attended, our students held their own, some very deep conversations with students who clearly have an entirely different perspective and experience with, with race and justice and equity as it relates to education in our district and in our country. So it was really good to hear our students be able to express themselves when they were indeed a minority, both literally and figuratively. And, and I do want to salute Sarah Lawrence. They will be sponsoring a lecture series that will continue this, this conversation and kudos to Bronxville for taking the challenge. The conversation all started as I was sitting in a superintendent Zoom meeting and I, it was the meeting immediately following what we saw unfold on television. And I literally said, I thought I was saying it to myself, but I was really saying it out loud and didn't realize it. Do they really think I'm going to sit in this meeting and not bring up what we just saw happen nationally? And that's how this all began. So salute to you, Brother Mohammed, for the challenge, for accepting the challenge and Mame and your, your fellow classmates for representing the district so well.
This is excellent. And you know, thank you so much, Brother Mohammed and, and Mame. And you know, this is such a great example of how we can use technology to bring people and ideas together. So it's, it's really been an incredible, in, in my view, silver lining that we've been kind of forced into as a result of the virus. So I, I think this is fantastic. And obviously it's something that we're going to continue to use. And I think it's just going to benefit us so dramat- so dramatically. I think it's wonderful. So great. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. So that actually concludes the superintendent's report for this evening. I want to thank everyone who participated and who made tonight a very informative and enlightening meeting for our, both our trustees and our public.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
As we say, we have so much going on in Mount Vernon, so many good things, great things happening. So it's, it's wonderful to, to see these, these examples. Bring them on. I would like to ask the trustees if they have any comments or committee reports or anything they'd like to share before we go into, we, we're going to have an early executive session and a late executive session. But before we go into executive session, does anyone have any comments or committee reports they'd like to share with the community and with the rest of us? Mame?
I have none.
Trustee Forson?
Yeah, I have a quick one. So about Wellness Wednesdays, I used to bring this up a lot. I've heard that we're going to get them back because the school, the school's opening, but then some people said maybe the high gets it or STEAM doesn't, or we're going to do half days or something, but nobody seems to know the full answer. So like, how do, I need a little more clarity on that.
Dr. Gorman, I know you've been working with the principals on developing that schedule.
Mame, with you in mind, high school kids will be receiving Wellness Wednesdays like the rest of the district. So it's according to the reentry plan. So for example, 12th graders came back today, so yesterday. So that was phase one of the reopening, reopening. So for 12th grade students, they will, they will participate in Wellness Wednesdays and attend school physically Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. There'll be no more cohorts. During that time, teachers will be scheduling office hours, wellness activities, small group instruction for kids that are falling possibly behind during the COVID slide and just overall help and, and, and support for all of our kids. And that'll be all teachers across the district. So the next phase in is April 6th. That's through three through eight. And then the final phase in is the following Monday. That following Monday, the whole district will then be on the Wellness Wednesdays through the remainder of this school year. So we heard you loud and clear, Fwak, and, and we really, we really heard what you were saying with the amount of work that's sometimes given to students in this virtual world. It's, it's not face-to-face instruction and that's our eventual goal to get everybody back into school.
And we have unified it as well, Mame, so that teachers are now, they have to keep a log and these logs, logs are subject to review. This was to raise a system of accountability so that any given time, if we needed to confirm or check and see how many students were being serviced and taking full advantage of these office hours. And by the way, all teachers do have office hours on Wednesdays. And this is really designed to, again, respond to what you have shared and students in the focus group as well as growing concerns that we have and teachers have concerned about mental wellness for our students. So I think this is a very strong approach to responding to the needs of our community.
Great. Thank you. And then the other question is about the AP exams that I brought up last time. So we, the teacher sent out a survey that said that students could choose between early May and paper tests or early June and online tests. But they don't know if we might do it late May. And it's really hard for us to study for the AP exams when we don't know when they are. So do we have like a idea of what is going to happen?
So there's a memo that actually came out today about, well, I've received it about an hour ago now, that gives us a little more flexibility on when those exams are going to, to take place. Dr. Smith, I forwarded that email to you. I don't know if you had a chance to address it, to review it yet. Can you respond to that, Dr. Smith?
No, I, I haven't received it not yet.
Okay.
I will take a look at it and Ms. Forson, I will get to back to you directly. We'll have Dr. Gabitan speak to you so that you could speak with the students that need that information. But we'll get it up. It'll be available for everyone to see.
Thank you.
Great. Trustee Saunders, you said you don't have any reports this evening, correct? Okay, great. Trustee Mitchell? You good?
I have nothing at this time.
Trustee Red?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. Trustee White? You're good? Okay. Great.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask. So, but for the people that are going back to school like in person, why are we going from six feet to three feet if there might be a chance of the new variants being more contagious or students just, they might get too close to each other or something? So why, why do we go back to three feet?
The new guidance, which the CDC released, actually says six feet or protective divider. And the CDC also released guidance in addition to six feet or dividers to go back to three feet. That schools can reopen with three feet without dividers as long as masks are being worn. So we're following that guidance and so very specifically to answer your question, the research about possible contamination in a masked environment is why we are reopening under these new parameters.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. So we continue to follow the guidelines that are put out by the CDC and we've taken, I would say, every precaution or are taking every precaution.
Yes.
Great. All right. We need
Madam President, I believe trustee White had a question. She had a hand raised and I have my hand raised as well.
I'm sorry I missed that.
It's all right. It's okay.
Trustee White, you are muted.
First I want to say I apologize for being late. I had my granddaughter here and she's not good with meetings. Second of all, Dr. Hamilton, so if kids can be six feet apart, they don't need the petitions?
They, it's six feet or a petition. But we're asking, we're, we added the petitions as another layer of protection, but the guidance actually doesn't say that at three feet, you need the petitions if students are consistently wearing the masks. So we are doubly protected because we are, first of all, we're not at three feet in most classrooms, but we have petitions and enforcing masks.
And did every school that started with pre-K through second, they all received petitions?
Everyone in the phase one, all the petitions are in. We have another delivery that is en route that we anticipate will be in place by the time our phase two and three students arrive so that every student will have a petition. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Great. Trustee Mitchell?
I'm, I'm actually got a question regarding the communication that came out about the reopening plan. I know you had the panel discussion on March 2nd, which was informative. I am a parent who have kids at home who are learning remotely. In your last communication regarding reopening, Dr. Hamilton, you stated although scaled back significantly, we will continue to offer remote instruction for families who prefer this mode of instruction. Can you explain in detail what scaling back significantly means? Does it mean that kids are not going to have their same teacher anymore for certain points of the day? Or how is it going to adversely affect my, you know, any, any kids in our district who have parents who have chosen remote learning?
Great question. So scaling back on the remote instruction is directly related to the number of teachers that are approved to work remotely. So our desire is to follow the standards that we were very liberal in the beginning with providing, approving teachers to work remotely. So we're scaling back on that approval process. And to the extent that we have teachers that are going to be able to work remotely, we are being more consistent with the guidance. In addition to that, we really do want to get our teachers back to a traditional mode of teaching because right now, many of our teachers, virtually all of them, are teaching both their in-person and their remote students. And I'd like to wean our teachers off of the multiple, the double platforms, frankly, just so that they can engage with students more and have a more highly effective instructional approach. So most people won't even see a difference, quite frankly, because it doesn't, we don't have that many people that are out. But I wanted parents to get acclimated to the fact that based on what we know and understand today, if we continue in this mode with infection rates stabilizing and reducing come September. Uh come September, my plan is to take um remove remote instruction as an option altogether. So in order to do that, we need to be gradual so it's not a a total upheaval all at once.
Got it. Great. Thank you. And of course, that plan even for September is still not etched in stone if.
Absolutely not.
Things change course.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Trustee Saunders just got her hand up too.
Just uh wanted to follow up. Didn't you say we were going to have testing in the schools?
Yes, so.
What's the story?
We are doing testing right now for our athletes. The neighborhood house, the neighborhood health center does our testing. Um, we are not able to mandate testing. Um, so we do have a partnership, so we can't bring the testing to our schools. Uh but we do have a partnership where we can refer students out with the uh AFC, which is the Urgent Care Center on Gramington. Um, they will be conducting our testing. I actually just found this out uh today and in fact. Um, that we can't offer it on site as I had hoped. Um, but we do have a direct line to getting testing done if we need to.
Would we ever refer a a student or a a um a pa- a teacher to get tested before coming to school because before coming in or?
Um, you know, I could see where there would be circumstances where that may be necessary. Um, I could see if there is a question about exposure. Or um depending on a contact tracer's recommendation, uh because I do send those reports. When the principals send those, the contact forms to me, I forward them one to the Department of Health and the contact tracers. Sometimes they have additional questions about. Um, how much contact, uh how much potential exposure. And I could see where that could happen. It hasn't so far, but I could see where that could conceivably happen.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are we good for this portion of the meeting? We will be coming back, so there'll be opportunities to. Ask more questions, but are we good for this point now, uh up to this point?
Okay, executive session for how long?
Uh, the first one should be relatively short, actually. It is just a special ed matter. Um, it was in the confidential, shared with the board on Friday. And I sent it home again today um uh on the executive session uh agenda items. So I can imagine this should take more than ten minutes.
I think, yeah, ten fifteen at the max.
Right.
And Rick, so you uh, we need a motion and for the purpose of. Dr. Hamilton just said it. You're muted.
Need a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing a student matter.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Okay, so uh to the public, we'll be back in fifteen minutes to resume the meeting. Uh, we're back. Thank you for your patience. To the community, thank you for your patience, administrators. Um, may I have a motion to return to public session?
Motion?
Motion.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Red?
All in favor?
I.
I. All right, uh. If there's, if there's a. If there are no additional reports, we'll move right to our uh resolutions to the agenda for this evening. So we're starting with human resources. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution five point one?
Motion?
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Trustee Mitchell?
Any questions about? This resolution? No, okay. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, abstain. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution five point two?
Motion?
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
White.
Any questions about this?
No.
And do have all the parents been informed of of the the schedule for next week for the vacation week about this um?
Yes.
The fact of the past?
We have um, what was the number? Dr. Bobble's one hundred and twenty-two?
No, we just ten, ten fewer. So we have eight spots for fourteen schools, so one hundred twelve.
Okay.
Yes, nearly what Dr. Hamilton had mentioned.
Great, great, okay. All right, all in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution six point one.
Motion?
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Trustee Red?
Any questions about the business office resolutions? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve School Improvement Resolution seven point one.
Motion?
Saunders?
Second.
Trustee Mitchell?
Any questions about? This resolution?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Um, so these are basically just changes in positions, people shuffling around, is that it? Looks like one of them. I'm just like, I'm just want this.
Oh, you're looking, you're looking at the second one. The first one is the um. Are you looking?
Wh- which one?
Are you looking at seven point one or are you looking at seven point two, Miss?
Seven point one.
Oh, okay.
So it's so. Like I noticed that there's something prorated. I'd just like to understand how that works is.
Oh, okay, on the parent liaisons because the she's not employed for the full year.
Right.
Uh, so payroll will know that she obviously will not be paid the full forty thousand dollars because she would only have work. Uh, March, uh, well, effectively April, May, and June. So her salary would only be would be based on that forty thousand divided by those three months.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. Any other questions? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain? May I have a motion to approve? School Improvement Resolution seven point two?
Motion?
Saunders?
Thank you, Warren. I read your lips. Okay, any, any questions about um? About this resolution?
Is that the summer school resolution?
Yes, Summer Learning Academy, yes.
Yes.
You have any, you have any questions about that, trustee White?
No, no, no.
Okay, great. Any, any other questions or comments about this? We're definitely going to need summer school. Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Abstain?
I, I abstain.
Oh, then the motion doesn't carry. Okay.
Well, oh, I will need to ask that question.
Um, how do we handle this? We have to.
Dr. Hamilton, do you know why I'm abstaining?
Uh, ma'am, I don't.
Um, Rebecca Turner? Liz?
Oh, okay, yes, no, trustee White should abstain. So we'll need need to reintroduce this um this matter at the next agenda. At the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Trustee White must abstain from that.
Okay. All right, so um. On to Student Services motions, uh motion to approve cert Student Services Resolution eight point one.
Motion?
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Any questions about this resolution? Okay, all in favor?
I.
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 Opposed? Stain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Buildings and Grounds Resolution nine point one?
Motion? Second.
Any questions about this uh change order? Okay, all in favor?
I.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Superintendent Resolution ten point one?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to call the board's attention that there's been an additional resolution add under the superintendent. Uh, as it relates to the matter that was discussed in executive session just prior to returning to the public session.
Okay, so to see it, you need to refresh. Right, but per per our discussion, got it? Okay, so um.
Think you had a motion on the table, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
I.
Uh, did we, did we get a second?
We had a motion. We didn't have a second yet.
Second.
I keep the, the noodles are done.
Okay, um, any, any questions about these superintendents' resolutions?
No.
Uh, what I want the, I'm sorry, trustee. Mitch? Was that? Okay, all right, I caught up. I I caught up, I'm sorry. I thought that comment was related to the agenda I was looking for.
Now, that was funny. That is funny, you know, we have to have, we have to be able to laugh. We have to be able to laugh. All right, so. We're voting now, correct? And I'm totally thrown off. All in favor?
I.
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 Abstain. Okay, those motions carry. Um, motion to prove approve Board of Elect, uh Board of Education uh. Resolution eleven point one, Appointment of School Election Inspectors.
Motion? Motion. Oh, I have second.
Okay, any, any questions about this? The usual routine here. Um, okay. All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. I guess that's it for our public meeting.
That is it.
That's it. So the next time we will see you.
In person.
April sixth, live from the Ed Center. We will be there in person with Plexiglas and masks and whatever else we need. So we're looking forward to.
We'll meet in person?
Yes, we are. Next me- meeting, April sixth. We're looking forward to that. Excuse me, we're looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone's. Person in the flesh and be great. So uh I need a motion now to go into executive session.
Motion? Second.
What is this for, Rick?
You're entering executive session to discuss current and pending litigation.
All in favor?
I.
I.
And our personnel and a personnel matter. I'm sorry, Madam President, um, we need to also go on the record for discussing a personnel matter.
And the employment history of a particular person.
Okay. All in favor?
I. I.
I. Opposed? Abstain? All right, uh, good night, folks. Thank you for attending this meeting and we'll see you on, have a nice uh Easter and Passover and we'll see you on April sixth.